Hi, everybody. Welcome to the meeting tonight. Could you double-check your phones, please? Make sure they're on silent. And please stand for the pledge allegiance.
The pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Patty, can you take the roll, please?
Mayor Woods.
Here, ma'am.
Vice Mayor Litt. Councilmember Marciano.
Here.
Councilmember Reed.
Yeah.
Additions, deletions, modifications?
No, sir.
Next is announcement and presentation. Ken, you're up first, please. Can you come up, please? Executive Director of the Honda Classic. And team.
Thank you, Mayor.
Hi, guys.
Andrew George, our great tournament director, is here with me. Can I pull this down to talk?
Please, yeah. Both, yeah, it's clear, yeah. We encourage it.
First of all, thank you, as always. I literally just flew in from Phoenix, and we're going to see the first PGA Tour event with fans this week, which is really exciting. The players are exciting. You'll hear from Andrew here in a little bit about the social distancing and the protocols that we're putting in place for this year. But what I want to do is start off on recap a little bit of 2020 and talk about kind of what we've been through. And I think many of you know, we were the second-to-last tournament on the PGA Tour before the COVID shutdown. It went from the Honda Classic here in Palm Beach Gardens to Bay Hill in Orlando, and then to the Players Championship, which, as we all know, was the shutdown. The tour restarted end of June. They've been very, very successful. It's been written up quite a bit how successful the franchise has been in restarting the game of golf. And for those of you that follow it on television each and every week, it's been wonderful. And as I said, Phoenix this week, it's pretty special, and it's nice to have fans back. So as we look at last year, yeah, second-to-last event on the tour. We had attendance, again eclipsed 200,000 people for the week of the tournament. We were so fortunate, as we all know, every event on the PGA Tour is a 501(c)(3). So we were able to give a little over $5.3 million to charity with a lead gift to Jack and Barbara Nicholas of $1,004,000 to the Nicholas Children's Healthcare Foundation. That surpassed $50 million in the history of the Honda Classic. As you probably know, the Honda Classic, this year will be 14 at PGA National, but it's really 18 years in the city of Palm Beach Gardens because it predated us in Marisol for four years. So it's just been a wonderful run and certainly will continue. The Birdies, the Honda Birdies for Children campaign brought in a little over $2.5 million, supported 88 organizations, 20,000 guesses, and the overall winner won a Honda automobile. The economic impact, which continues to grow each and every year, was a little over $62 million measured by an outside entity. Again, second straight year of rooms, over 10,000 that we can measure. There are a lot more rooms that the tournament is responsible for that we just frankly are not able to track. The television coverage on both the Golf Channel and NBC Sports was over 55 hours of broadcast time. Of that 60 minutes, measured minutes, direct on air coverage highlighting the city of Palm Beach Gardens and, of course, PGA National Resort and Spa. The broadcast on the PGA Tour is, potential households are over a billion households, 220-plus countries around the world. So as we all know, this year will be mid-March, but as we all know, in late February, mid-March wintertime, the city of Palm Beach Gardens and, of course, Palm Beach County are highlighted literally around the world. We also continued our partnership with the Tourism Development Board and the Palm Beach County Film and Television Commission, where we produced live coverage outside the ropes at the Honda Classic, which is not inside the ropes, but for us, it's about showing. You know, we've had a lot of the city leaders interviewed as well, showing the, just the lot of the fun and the excitement and enthusiasm that the Honda brings to this community each and every year. So as we look towards '21, Andrew's going to get into a little bit of the detail. This will be the 40th anniversary of the Honda Classic. As I mentioned, it'll be year 18 here in the city of Palm Beach Gardens. So we have this thing, 40-50. Forty years Honda Classic, 50-plus million for charity, which has just been a wonderful run. We do have a new date this year. I mentioned briefly, it'll be the middle of March. Reason being, not COVID-related, believe it or not, it's predetermined, predated COVID. The date really is, there's one less week before the Masters Tournament in April, and that's just the way the calendar falls. So as an example, Capilua this year started January 8th. The tour does not want to start that event between Christmas and New Year's. So for the next three years, we're going to be in that middle-March timeframe, which frankly, we think will be good for us while it follows the Players Championship. We've talked to a lot of players, and this seems to be a better date anyway. It is spring break date, so while we might lose some people whose kids are on spring break, but we're already finding a lot of people that come down to Florida, come down to the city of Palm Beach Gardens, are looking forward to come out to the tournament because they're already going to be here in town. So on the limited capacity, it'll be essentially 20% of our normal values. Andrew will go over kind of our reimagined hospitality plan. It'll be a Thursday to Sunday only. We will not have anyone on-site Monday to Wednesday. PGA Tour rules. We will have our full component of pro am's on Monday and Wednesday that we've had in the past, of course, complete with all testing for anyone that plays in the pro am's. And I'm going to pass it over to Andrew to talk a little bit about what we've been through. As you can imagine, there's been tremendous collaboration with the entire PGA Tour. The PGA Tour, like yourselves, are scrutinizing, you know, all of the events. Again, I just saw it in Phoenix this past weekend, past two days. It's amazing, and I think when you get to the Honda Classic this year, and you see what we're doing to roll out to make sure we protect our constituents, it's going to be pretty impressive. And again, our state is more wide open than the PGA Tour is, allowing us to be, frankly. You know, we're going to have essentially 10,000 fans per day, 20% capacity. But the PGA Tour is really handcuffing us more than certainly what the state of Florida would allow. So with that, Andrew George, our tournament director.
Thanks, Ken. It was kind of fun to go through the photo tour of 2020, just to see fans out there for a change. As Ken mentioned, you know, it starts, just kind of a background into planning and approach for this year, it starts with the collaboration, certainly at the state level, at the county level. But I just thank you from our staff, Ron, your team, the entire city, city council, mayor. You've been very clear, and health and safety's got to be the priority, but you haven't said there's no way, no how. It's been, let's find a pathway to success here. And I think our entire team has really dug in. It's been a trying, I think, nine to 12 months, but we feel confident in kind of where we're going as a staff in putting plans in place. It includes a daily call with the PGA Tour. We have, we had a very methodical three-month timeframe with the PGA Tour to come forward with our final plan for their review and approval, essentially. It included a lot of findings that they've had across the entire platform from California to Arizona and then certainly into Florida, but also includes all the CDC guidelines as well, and takes you through the pathway from the journey of getting on the bus in the parking lot, all the way through, you know, what that person does on-site in excruciating fashion. But I think it's been great in that collaboration with the tour. They'll create a bubble, as they have with every event, for the PGA Tour players and the caddies to make sure that they're safe and separated, all the essential personnel from the PGA Tour. They've got that now going on, you know, literally almost a year. So they've got that practice down pretty well by the time they get to the Honda Classic. We're finding the learnings. As Ken mentioned, he just came out from Phoenix. That was the first event, really, at Waste Management where they'll have substantive fans. For us, we also have Arnold Palmer, the Players Championship, and the Honda Classic will all have really the same amount. When you look at our reduced attendance, it'll be essentially the same as the other two events. So we're going to have a lot of learnings from those events as we go forward, ways to tweak down the stretch, but continue forward here in the next 45 days. And then the last priority from the tour and from our standpoint is crowd flow. We've, as you just heard, we've done 15 years at PGA National. We know where the pinch points are. We know where the crowds gather around greens. So a big part of our plan has been, you know, how do you manage the general mission to come out to make sure that they're safe and healthy as they watch those golfers on the key holes? This is not the full robust list, but just an overview on the health and safety upgrades this year. As Ken mentioned, we have a reimagined plan out on site. I think the question we get daily is, what's the Bear Trap look like? It's not the Bear Trap of normal years. In every venue, we have limited capacity. We have expanded space to make sure that we're hitting those CDC guidelines on the square footage per person. No AC this year. Everything will be open-air, but we've got a beautiful ballpark with 250 acres out there. Deep cleaning throughout the day, and then certainly at night, we have a separate crew that's going to come in and basically work from 9:00 PM until 5:00 AM, making sure we're ready to go for the following day. You know, the PPE enhanced sanitizer you see everywhere now, we'll continue to make sure that we have that out on-site. Mask mandate is a PGA Tour policy, and we'll continue to that until they say otherwise. But that'll be on-site unless you're actively eating or drinking. We have a health and safety committee of enthusiastic volunteers, almost 100 strong, that are ready to go out and remind those folks of the social distancing guidelines we have in place, make sure that they're having a great time, but also adhering to the rules that we have for this year. We've revised the entire F&amp;B platform. It's a contactless tournament experience, I think, from start to finish. That will probably happen going forward anyways. You see events going into more of a digital presence versus the cash of yesteryear. And then finally, our transportation coming in on-site. While we don't have a lot of parking needs and the transportation from buses will be limited, we'll certainly spread that out to make sure we have reduced capacity on every bus. So it's been, again, it's been a long nine to 12 months getting ready for the event, as certainly everyone has in every business. But at the end of the day, as Ken mentioned, it's all about the charity and the collaboration with your team. Ron, mayor, city council has been incredible, and we look forward to hopefully being able to give back to Nicholas and the charity again this year in 2021. Thank you.
Awesome. Guys, any questions or comments on this? Mark? You're one of the golfers.
Well, I was out there today. Did I just say I played golf today?
The greens are too quick.
I was out there today, and it was really hard. The greens are so fast. My God, it was crazy. That's why I play, and I don't play more than once in a week, because, but no, you know, the excitement is still there, and I thank you guys for that. You know, you can see the construction starting. It's very well spaced out. I'm sure just, you know, we miss seeing these multi-tiered indoor-outdoor type of areas, but it's going to be fantastic. I mean, you guys do such a great job, and I can't, I can't imagine you skimping on any of the things that you do for the safety of the people that are going to go watch and the players that are going to play. So I'm excited to be there and to watch, and thank you for making it work.
Yeah, thank you, Councilman. The one thing that was important to Andrew, myself, and our operations team is to make sure that this tournament still looks like a tournament. I mean, some of these events we've seen on TV doesn't look like anything, right? So you were out there. We have a great build on 18. We have a build coming on 17, or it's up. We have the Bear Trap, as Andrew mentioned, all in different zones, so you won't be able to go from the left side to the right side to the middle. I mean, it's all mandated really by numbers based on square footage and all that. But the one thing we wanted to do is keep some consistency out there. While the numbers are limited, our margins are squeezed, obviously has to be, because it still costs money to build these structures. But it was important to us and our board to make sure that what we put forth in the city of Palm Beach Gardens is going to be another great Honda Classic, although limited. Our tickets are going on sale on Monday to the general public. We have had a sneak peek kind of this week to existing partners, and there's no doubt the tickets will really be sold out. And it's not going to be, well, you can give me an extra ticket for Thursday, and I want to use it Friday. No, no, no. These are day-specific tickets. I'm working with Ron Ferris on, you know, our partnership with you guys as well, but it's all-day specific. I mean, if we've got, you know, 2,000, well, we have 5,000 per day in a GA, but a lot of that's already allocated between Honda and others. I mean, we're only going to have, it's like a ballpark, right? If you're 65,000 seats, that's all the tickets you can sell. So it's going to be, it's going to be a challenge for a lot of people. We're just encouraging people that do want to go to make sure they go early, because I think these will disappear. But Mark, to your comment, it's very important for us to make sure that our partners are hanging with us. We've had some great conversations with a lot of local businesses here in the city of Palm Beach Gardens that are living up to their contracts, even though they're not getting the benefit that they do, because they know at the end of the day, this is about giving back to charity. So we want us, you know, we want people to understand that '21 is a blip. We're going to roll right into '22. We're going to have a successful '21 and move on. So thank you very much for your support.
All right, thank you very much, guys. Thank you, Andrew. See you guys soon. Carrier Corporation, Ernie Chan, would you please come up, sir?
Hello, Mayor.
How are you?
Good, good. And council members?
Can you name an address for the record, please?
Pardon?
Name an address for the record.
Ernie Chan, 126 Indigo River Point, Jupiter.
Cool, thanks.
Okay. So my name's Ernie Chan. I'm the general manager for the Blue Diamond Platform and Valiant Services for Lynell S2, a carrier global corporation, part of Carrier's Global Corporation. Carrier, as you know, is a world leader in HVAC, refrigeration, and fire security solutions. And as some of you may know, Carrier's world headquarters is proudly based right here in Palm Beach Gardens, Florida. So I'm here today representing our fire security segments to speak with you about a new contact notification feature we're looking to offer in our Blue Diamond mobile app. This feature captures contact between the mobile devices of individual users who have spent a predefined amount of time within two meters of each other. Within the app, users will self-identify whether they report are positive, tested positive, or have been in contact with someone who has tested positive for COVID-19. So when a user self-reports that a positive test for COVID-19, or I've been in contact with someone that was positive for COVID-19, all other users who have had direct contact with that user will be automatically notified of the contact through the app itself. The contact notification feature is completely anonymous. The identities of the individual app users are not known, as they are all assigned a non-identifiable, random-generated number that cannot be traced back. So we really appreciate your support to pass this resolution so we can help support our customers globally in their effort to safely bring their employees back into the buildings. And I'm here to answer any questions you might have with regards to the product and the app itself. So.
Questions, comments? Go ahead.
The use of the app is mainly going to be geared to individual corporations who want to use the app in-house for their employees, or is it for everybody out on the street?
It's specifically geared towards the enterprise market. So essentially, facility managers, HR for the building will not only know the health of their building with regards to the number of people in their buildings that have self-notified that they're positive, but also those who are at risk who have been in contact with them. It's also to help really let the occupant and employees feel safe about going back into the office, because they'll be notified if they have been in contact with someone that self-notified. And it's really, you know, really localized. So once you leave the building itself, because it's geofenced, the app will no longer be functioning. So it's really focused around the building itself.
Yeah, that was my question. So it's just building only is when the app?
Yeah.
Okay.
That's correct.
So when you launch this, or if you launch it, how many individuals are going to be immediately on this particular application? Is this just carrier-wide, or do you have associate corporations that are waiting for you to do this as well?
Yeah, so we've had, you know, customers who've shown interest, but at this point, it'll be, we're looking to launch likely the end of Q1. And at that point, it'll be, you know, customers will need to sign up for this, for the service. And so at this point, it will be really localized to Carrier to begin with, but then it'll be open to other customers.
Okay. I don't really have any questions. I think we kind of know about it. Ron, is this something we're bringing back later to?
It's under consent agenda.
Okay, all right. So we don't have any more questions, Ernie? If, unless you have anything else, we're good for now.
No, I really appreciate, you know, the opportunity to speak with you guys and really appreciate the support, you know, for this. So thank you very much.
Yeah, we're glad you came in to talk to us about it.
Yeah, anytime.
Thank you, sir.
Yep.
Next is comments from the public. So Mr. Nanfro, would you please come up? Name an address for the record, please.
Rob Nanfro, 10901 South Gardens Drive, Apartment 105. Good evening to our city council and our city administration. After the last council meeting, I decided to review the $127 million adopted 2021 city budget and a few other items. Here's what caught my eye. The total estimated cost for the city council for 2021 is $545,000. This includes salary, health insurance, pension, and other expenses for a part-time role. That is roughly $109,000 per person. Quite expensive, I thought. And then I gave the leaders of our community the benefit of doubt that you all work really hard for the city. One of the traits that a good leader must have is the ability to manage, manage their talented employees. Luckily for the city council, you only have one employee, and that is the city manager, which I won't point, Ronald Ferris. Last month, in Resolution 132021, you approved that he had total control to expend the $14 million bond proceeds as he deems necessary and prudent. I thought to myself that the city council appears to have a great amount of confidence in Mr. Ferris's ability. Since I wanted some tangible evidence to prove this theory, I requested the HR evaluations from 2000 to 2020 of Mr. Ferris, you know, the annual review that is common HR practice. To my surprise, not much information was available. In 2021, a few self-evaluations and an appraisal report, and then a formal review in 2010, signed by the vice mayor. To be thorough, I even asked the city clerk if I was given all the information, and she replied yes. Why do I bring this up? Because for the past 20 years, there has been little involvement at the city council level in formally evaluating Mr. Ferris's performance, as he is responsible for running our $127 million city. How do you know if he's doing a good job or a bad job, if there's no accountability, direction, or goals for him? I do not know the correct answer, but I'm concerned. During your tenure as a city council, you've all failed Mr. Ferris and our signature city as elected leaders to oversee and manage one person. My evaluation of your performance is unsatisfactory.
Thank you, Mr. Nanfro. Marcy Tinsley, would you come up? Name an address for the record, please.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. For the record, my name is Marcy Tinsley, and my address is 1302 Sonoma Court, Palm Beach Gardens.
Can you speak a little louder, please?
Yes, I'm going to lower the microphone.
Can somebody direct Mr. Nanfro to put his mask on, please, or leave the building?
As you all know, I've been campaigning all over our city, which gives me the opportunity to hear so many of our residents and business owners. The common concern and frustration that I hear is, in fact, that our city residents are unable to get a vaccine, and that is actually so heartbreaking. At our last council meeting, I heard Chief Breyer's presentation on COVID. He detailed our city's efficient, safe capability of inoculating 200 people per day. Last week, I spoke to a few of those lucky people that received the vaccine here in our city, and they expressed how safe, efficient, and seamless the process was. And that got me thinking. While our governor has done a great job getting vaccines to Publix, there are many, many people that have concerns about going to the grocery store or to the pharmacy. As an example, my 83-year-old neighbor has not been to a Publix in probably more than 10 months. In addition, she's concerned about a reaction from the shot and would much rather have a trained paramedic administer the shot and deal with any reactions. When she heard about the city's plan, she loved it. Unfortunately, she and so many others that have applied through our city portal was told that there were no more vaccines. Again, more heartbreaking actions. Therefore, I decided to put a plan in action. I'm gathering petitions from those that want a vaccine. I plan to lobby our governor to provide our city with vaccines to continue doing what our chief and his award-winning team has set in place to do, in concert with Publix, of course. This would give our residents much-needed options. With that said, I've created a resolution, which is very similar to those that have been approved in the past. I emailed it to you earlier this week. I hope you all got that copy of the email. I'm humbly requesting that you approve and sign this resolution, asking our governor to provide us with vaccines to continue utilizing our existing infrastructure, such as fire stations, parks, community centers, to inoculate 200 people per day, six days a week, for those eligible people who would like the vaccine. Thank you.
Thank you, Marcy. And then for the record, I did get my copy of this resolution. I think you guys did, too. Next is city manager report. Ron, do we have one this evening?
No report.
Next is consent agenda. Nothing polled?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion, parious, 4-0. There are no quasi-judicial statements this evening?
No, sir.
Ordinance 1, 2021, second reading. Patty, can you read the title, please?
Sorry. Ordinance 1, 2021, in ordinance of the city council of the city of Palm Beach Gardens, Florida, amending Chapter 38 Fire Prevention and Protection of the Code of Ordinances at Article 2, Fire Department, Division 2. Firefighters Pension Fund by repealing subsection 38-652 and re-adopting same as revised. To comply with the Secure Act, providing that each and every other section and subsection of Chapter 38 Fire Prevention and Protection shall remain in full force and effect as previously adopted, providing of conflicts clause, severability clause, and authority to codify, providing an effective date for the purposes.
Does anybody need any other presentation on this?
No, thank you.
So I'm going to open the hearing. Anybody wishing to speak on this item? So I'm going to close the hearing. Can I get a motion and second to approve, please?
I make a motion to approve ordinance 1, 2021.
I'll second it. Any discussion on this?
No, it's second reading, and we've gone through this before.
Yep.
And feel really confident about that.
Yeah, I think we're all good to go. Can I say ordinance 1, 2021 passes 4-0? All right, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Ordinance 2, 2021, Patty, do you read the title on that, please?
Ordinance 2, 2021, in ordinance of the city council of the city of Palm Beach Gardens, Florida, amending Chapter 50 Police of the Code of Ordinances at Article 3 Police Officers' Retirement Trust Fund by adopting new subsection 50-62A1, further amending Chapter 50 by repealing subsection 50-132B2 and re-adopting same as revised. Further amending Chapter 50 by repealing subsection 50-152D3 and re-adopting same as revised. All to comply with recent amendments to the Internal Revenue Code, providing that each and every other section and subsection of Chapter 50 police shall remain in full force and effect as previously adopted, providing a conflicts clause, a severability clause, and authority to codify, providing an effective date for the purposes.
And open the hearing. Has anything changed since first reading?
No, sir. Been no changes since first reading. Still, no cost to the city for these changes.
Thank you, Alan. Nobody else needs a presentation, I assume, everybody? We're all good on this one? So I'm going to close the hearing. Can I get a motion and second, please?
I'll make a motion to approve the ordinance.
I'll second that motion, please.
Chelsea has the second. Discussion, none?
Again, it was clearly presented, so thank you.
Understood, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Ordinance 2 passes 4-0. Ordinance 3, 2021, Patty, can you read that one?
Ordinance 3, 2021, in ordinance of the city council of the city of Palm Beach Gardens, Florida, approving an update to its comprehensive plan in accordance with the mandate set forth in Section 163.3177 Florida statutes pursuant to a city-initiated update that provides for the annual update to the city's five-year capital improvement schedule and the Palm Beach County School Board's summary of capital improvement schedule within the capital improvements element, providing that the data as amended or revised shall be substituted for and replace the existing data in the capital improvements element, providing a conflicts clause, a severability clause, and authority to codify, providing an effective date for other purposes.
Open the hearing. Has anything changed on the first reading since that one?
No, sir, no changes.
Thank you. Nobody else needs a presentation on this one as well, guys? Nobody's wishing to speak on this matter? I'm going to close the hearing. Can I get a motion and second to approve?
I make a motion to approve ordinance 3, 2021.
Mark?
I'll second.
Okay.
And if I make, just want to make a quick comment. And if I make, just want to make a quick comment. CIP, this is a great way for people in the city to learn what the city is planning for the future. So if anyone has any interest in learning a little bit about what the city does and where the priorities are going forward, this is a wonderful opportunity to see that.
Thank you, ma'am. Hearing, no further discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Ordinance 3, 2021 passes 4-0. Items for council, right, we're done.
Resolutions.
I've got something to discuss. Are we at council?
We got a couple resolutions?
Go ahead.
Just Marcy's? Okay, so we're just going to, we're going to just scoop that into council discussion.
Discuss Marcy's first, and I'll go next.
All right. So I think Marcy's resolution is on point. I'm going to support it. Anything we can do for the community to, to let the governor know that we're interested in, you know, that we can facilitate getting this COVID distributed to everybody in the city? I mean, I'm for it. How can, you know?
Well, we've had the opportunity to distribute 200 vaccines here in the city safely, efficiently. All of the, we've gotten countless emails from our local residents saying it was seamless. They felt comfortable having a paramedic nearby just in case they had a reaction, which I think was a great point to bring up. The fact that we can do a minimum of 1,200 a week, that we could do our entire population within our city in a matter of weeks, and that's just the one location. I know our city, if given the opportunity, would have more than one location available. So I cannot think of a reason why we wouldn't want to give a vaccine to anyone in our city who might want it.
Right.
No, I agree 100% with Chelsea. Our EMTs have the, the medical capability to do this. We have the ability to store the vaccines. And I think as a healthcare provider myself, having to rely on a grocery store chain as the only outlet makes no sense. And we can get to a lot of our own residents a lot faster if the vaccine's here. So I don't see a down, I don't see a downside to, to approval of the resolution and to encourage as many residents to sign on so that we can get the governor. It worked this week, by the way. Commissioner McKinley raised stink at the commission meeting, and, and the governor sent doses of vaccine to Belle Glade. So I think if Palm Beach Gardens does the same, we can draw some attention to and get some to our fire department.
Palm Beach Post, do you hear that? You're a conduit.
I just also want to add, I want to do a big shout out to our recreation staff, our city manager, and our fire department for putting it together so that we could brag about what a great job we would do to vaccinate our residents as well.
I don't know if it was last meeting or the meeting before that, but this council, you guys, us, you know, we made it clear that we were trying, oh, because we got some emails from, from our constituents on vaccines and stuff. And we made it clear we were going to do everything we could. And, you know, it's so great that Marcy brought this up. We're always trying to come up with stuff, and we make resolutions, and the city makes, you know, staff makes resolutions, and we sign them. But it was Marcy that brought this up. So, I mean, that's really forward-thinking. It's, 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 it's good. So.
It's nice to have a resolution.
I would, I would like to say I kind of wish I got credit for that, but, I mean, give credit where credit's due. It's a great one. So anyway.
Well, this is an example of how residents in our city think about other residents in our city and trying to make their lives better. And this is an example of someone who really, I, I didn't even think about how it would work. I mean, we all sit back and are frustrated and are angry and feel the frustration of our residents, and we all just say, well, what can we do? What can we do? We call our county commissioners, we're calling our state representatives, and they all tell us the same story. Whether or not this will get us anywhere, I don't know, but why not try? And at least it shows that we are trying to do what we can. And I want to thank you, Marcy, for, for bringing the idea up. This is how forward-thinking people think and how people try to make our city better by coming up with ideas. And certainly, we don't know all the answers, but you came up with a great option. So thank you.
And you know, you know what, too? Sorry, Mark. You know, the governor wants to know people are coming up with ideas because, you know what, until, until Ms. Tinsley brought that up, that was like a, I just want to say it was like a pocket that, that no one really thought about, these little pocket communities like Belle Glade and LaBelle, that it might have been just a slight oversight and not on, not intentionally on the governor's part. But it was nice that she brought that up. And then we're going to try and be a voice where, hey, we could, we don't need the county to speak for us. We do that very well on our own. So we just let the governor know on, in large part because of this resolution, that we're interested in getting, I mean, the governor's trying, and we want to help. So anyway, it's all good.
Mr. Mayor, hearing the comments of the council at this time, it'd be, it'd be appropriate, if it's your intention to, to pass this resolution. Madam Clerk, do you know we need to sign a resolution number to it? Do you have the next resolution, next sequential resolution
Yes, sir. That would be Resolution 20.
It would be Resolution 2021, Resolution 2021. And it would be appropriate to ask the clerk to read the resolution by title, Mr. Mayor.
All right. So should I just get that done? Because I think we can say no further discussion from council. Guys okay with that? So Patty, would you read the, would you read the title on 202021, please?
Yes, sir. Resolution 2021, a resolution in the city council of the city of Palm Beach Gardens, Florida, encouraging Governor DeSantis to utilize the city of Palm Beach Gardens' approved point of distribution, POD, for the distribution of the COVID-19 vaccine in order to protect those individuals who possess comorbidities that render them at risk for COVID-19, to more efficiently combat the pandemic, and to protect the health, safety, and welfare of our citizens and the public at large, providing an effective date for the purposes.
Thank you. All right. So since it's, Max, can I just get a motion and second to approve?
Real quick, can I ask one more quick question? I just want to be really specific. So anyone who's listening, because there are people out there that have very strong feelings about vaccines, one way or another, that this is about establishing the ability to provide vaccine for anyone who cares to receive it.
Correct. It is in no way a mandate. It would just be, the city would is, is, from my understanding, would be encouraging the governor to utilize the city's POD, its POD, its point of distribution, to help facilitate the inoculation and the administration of the vaccine for those that wish to receive it. Yes, ma'am?
Thank you. Thanks.
And it would be appropriate to have a motion and second, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Can I get a motion and second to approve Resolution 202021, please?
I'd like to make a motion to approve 20, Resolution 202021.
I'll second.
All right. No further discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion, Resolution carries 4-0.
Thank you.
Any other? Oh, you know what? I heard somebody geeked out this week. It's two to my right. Seacoast.
I know. Sorry. I got to tour Seacoast. So.
It's cool, isn't it?
Oh, my goodness. It was amazing. Actually, it was supposed to be about a one and a half hour tour, and it wound up being three because you, going there and actually getting a deep understanding of where our water comes from, where it goes, and the fact that we have zero waste product for the most part. Any product we have is given to the solid waste authority, and it's minuscule compared to what used to be produced. Any extra water is used as reclaimed water. And so it's kind of a, it's a proper circular economy right here, a half a mile from my house. So it was really impressive. And so anyone that is interested in geeking out, I recommend you go onto the Seacoast website. You will be blown away by the efforts made. And the best part is so many people have been working there for decades and decades and decades. And as a previous business owner, I always kind of marked our success of businesses to how happy our staff was. And they have staff that won't leave and won't retire. And I think that's the best. So it's a great reflection on our city. And thank you so much for setting it up.
You're welcome.
And speaking of events, I want to thank Chief Breyer for letting me come out and see the new facility, training facility. You had some young recruits out there going through the motions. So it was really neat to see. Great facility. It's going to be a nice, we already know it's going to be a great, but it was really fun to be out there. And I think you went, too, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. So thank you for, for the tour.
Yeah. And I want to thank the chief for, Fire Chief, for setting up the, with all the kids that are coming over. I don't know if it happened yet. I just, yeah. So thank you for that. I think they're like in the five, six range and freaking out about hoses and fire trucks. So.
Yeah.
I liked cop cars myself, but nothing personal.
Carl, after we talk about Rochelle's information, I want to mention Artie Crowe as well.
I actually have two things. So I'll start with one. On the 28th, Carl, Mayor, received a letter from Lawrence Milstein, who's the director of the AJC for Palm Beach County, asking him if he would sign on to the U.S. Conference of Mayors Partnership with AJC, Mayor's United Against Antisemitism. The council had approved the resolution last year. It was Resolution 13, where we supported the IRA, the International Holocaust Remembrance Association's definition of antisemitism. And I just wanted to ask my fellow council members to give Carl our support. On January 27th, they announced that combination with the Conference of Mayors. Keith James has signed on already. There's over 200 mayors that have already signed on, including West Palm, Port St. Lucie, and I think there are like 30 others in Florida so far. So.
Yeah. When I got this request, you know, I wanted to make sure I talked it over with Ron and Max first because I didn't want to sign anything on behalf of us without you guys approving it. Like, I don't want any of you guys to go out and speak on behalf of all of us because we're, we're kind of a tight group. So it was the right thing to do to bring it up and discuss it here. So, I mean, we're, we're all once aboard, or once again on board with the antisemitism, just like we were last year with the resolution.
It's basically a click on the website, and you sign your name as the mayor to join the effort to, to speak out. So Ron can, Ron can help you click.
Yeah, we can't get through a meeting without you saying something.
And I've got one, one other thing because I am fact-based, and I can't let things sit that are not factual. And I'll address this to the comments made by Mr. Nanfro earlier. Maybe it's because you're new in the city. The city does, the council members do do an evaluation of our city manager every year, live, right here on the dais. They are in all of the records, so they can be gone back, and you can hear what they are. And they are based on all of the things we see in the city every day. In 2019, Palm Beach Gardens was voted the best city in which to live in Florida. That doesn't just happen. That happens from the top down. We have an award-winning fire department, an award-winning police department. Our Parks and Recreation Department has gotten many awards, and our purchasing department is constantly being recognized for the great job they do. Our Planning and Zoning Department is considered by most of the developers in this county as one of the finest and best and easiest to work with. And you can see what has come out of that department because we are the signature city that we are. So I just wanted to say that we do appreciate what Ron does. What Ron does is on view for the entire city every day, and he is evaluated after everything that he does.
Well, and I will say that most people that live here don't bash the city. So raised my kid here, worked for the city, and now I've been doing the council thing for many times. And every time that I'm in Publix or everywhere else, everybody brags on the city. So it's a great place to be. Everybody works hard. Anything else, guys? City attorney report?
Yes, sir.
Oh, does that know, Max?
No, sir.
Meeting adjourned.